Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, September 5th, 2023 Tumwater City Council meeting. Welcome everyone back from our council break. I see that most everyone is in Zoom. So first we'll start off with roll call.
Councilmember Leeta Dahlhoff.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
She is excused this evening.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Althouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agave.
Present.
Councilmember Charlie Schneider.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
And I am present. Join me in our flag salute.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Can I have someone bring me the list? Do we have anyone signed up remotely for public comment?
We do not.
Okay. All right, first person on the list is Dottie LaRojge. If you could come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And all public comment is three minutes.
My name is Dottie Laranji. I currently reside in Thunderbird Village, which is 716 Dennis Street Southeast, Tumwater.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm here on behalf of hoping we can keep TCI Media fluent and fluid and with funding. Two and a half years ago, I had a neighbor who suggested that maybe I might want to come volunteer down at TC Media. Unbeknownst to me, that person has had me in films, movies, talk show host. I even got an article about myself in the senior news about 80 being just a number. Because it's not just a number. You can do anything, no matter what age you are. But the experiences that I have gained from TC Media have just blossomed my life beyond my wildest dreams. I'm a volunteer there. I can run cameras. I can do set design costumes. This would never have happened had I not been exposed to TC Media. I know that there's other people in our development that are also involved now. So it's kind of a network. I tell two friends, they tell two friends, they tell two friends. TC Media is not just to record the county meetings or Lacey meetings or Olympia. It's for the public. They also have things that they do for nonprofit organizations. They dedicate specific hours to just plugging those nonprofits. I can't say enough for what they have done for me, and I wish they could do more for everybody else. I've even helped with the Olympia Women's Club, and they're a philanthropic, philanthropic organization. And again, TC Media did big stories on them to help get their information out. Please, please support TC Media. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Darlene Atkins. And for staff, can I have you do timekeeping? I did not bring a clock, and that one's not working. And name and address in three minutes. Thank you.
Can I get a warning when I'm down to 30 seconds?
Yeah, we'll get you a warning. Yeah.
Okay. My name is Darlene Atkins. I'm a Tumwater resident and live at 716 Dennis Street. Good evening, Mayor Sullivan, council members, and those in the audience tonight. Just want to thank all the people that are working for the public good and doing the public service for our community. I really appreciate that. As I got to the end of my Army Reserve career, after, you know, heading into my 20th year, I was looking at what I wanted to do next. Something for the public good. And I became aware of TC Media and their classes there. And so I took classes. I liked what I saw. And then I recruited some fantastic women in my 55-plus community and also out there in the greater Thurston County community. And with the help of TC Media's training, we got a show off the air called In the Know Women's Show. And where I interview women in the county that have some impact, either via the organizations they're involved in or their work that they do in this area. And it's been a blast. We learned a lot about these organizations, the storytelling groups. There's four in this town. The filmmaking group that's here, all these filmmakers, it's unbelievable. It inspired me so much through these relationships through TC Media that I entered a short film contest for the first time. And then also Dottie has been acting in parts in these films too. So it impacts the quality of our life having this option. And I've seen so much creativity in TC Media and the staff and these projects. One is called Live at Five. It's kind of like Saturday Night Live. That was a huge undertaking, and I will drop a name here, Robert Cam. That was his, you know, brilliance and expertise and a lot of people. I don't know how many people were involved in that, maybe 40 or something. But, you know, that runs on public TV. It's unique. It's not something, 30? It's not something you're going to see on ABC or NBC. You know, it's, it's unique to our community and it brings a lot of people together. Lastly, next month I'll have my 10th episode since we started. And I'm going to be interviewing another name drop here, the former wonderful Washington State Director of Veterans Affairs, Alfie Alvarado. She's a veteran and she's quite the dynamo, and I'm so looking forward to that interview. So I'd like to ask that you continue to support TC Media if it's possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Nicandary. And we do have the clock working now, I think.
Clock's working for me now.
Yeah.
Dave Nicandary, 505 South Fourth Avenue. I was, I was here in May to inquire about the status of the city's interpretation of the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals on the unconstitutionality of the outlawing of natural gas hookups and natural gas appliances. And came prepared tonight to complain that it's been almost three months, but there's been a breakthrough. So I'll call that short. Other than just to make the brief comment as part of my ongoing dialogue, that the Thurston County Climate Action Plan makes a big point on page 26, that, that nothing that's included in the plan should affect the ability of people to pay for the shift in resources that's anticipated in the plan. And I'll just make this quick aside before I move to my second and different topic, which is that this mad rush to electrical vehicles, electric vehicles are not cheap. They're luxury cars. They cost $50,000, $60,000. And we're going to be, we're going to be forcing every, even with the government rebates and such, we're going to be forcing people to buy these things. And I'd also point out that not only are they more expensive and likely unaffordable as a long-term measure, but hybrids, which until this mad dash was considered kind of the progressive way to go. There's enough rare earth metals, including lithium, in one electric vehicle to power 90 hybrid cars, like the old Toyota Priuses. This is a crazy policy of Russia mandating that we shift to all-electric vehicles. But I'm going to have some further dialogue with city staff about that and perhaps the city attorney for which I'm grateful. So in my remaining one minute and 18 seconds, today was my first meeting as a member, as your appointee mayor, of the Regional Public Facilities District. And there's a couple of highlights that I just want to bring to your attention, other members of the council watching in. That district seemingly created in 2003 or '04. The final bond payments on those initial projects, the Rack and Lacey and the Children's Museum, they're going to be paid off in '26 and '27. And those jurisdictions, meaning Lacey and Olympia, the jurisdictions in which those facilities are located, although subvened in part by resources provided by the taxpayers of the city of Tumwater, those jurisdictions are already laying the groundwork for the next round of public facilities capital improvements. Just wanted to highlight that as your representative, in case that was slipping by the radar. I think since those jurisdictions are getting their ore in the water, I think Tumwater should begin to pay some attention to that. And of course, I'd be more than willing to talk with any members, you mayor and members of the council and city staff, about some ideas along those lines. Also, and I know I'm running, perhaps because I'm now giving, in effect, an intergovernmental report, I might have the allotment of an additional 30 seconds for. Sorry, I don't try to be humorous when I come here, but it just seems to happen. So come to find out, former councilmember Chris Lick is a member of that board, and he found it as a revelation based upon a line of questioning I initiated, that not only can the Public Facilities District resources pay for capital improvements, which initially he was under an understanding was all that could be spent on. Come to find out, the city of Lacey and the city of Olympia have been spending considerable resources from that revenue stream for ongoing maintenance and operation. He, as a former member of your council, me too, although I predate him by half a century, he found that a revelation. So I just also highlight that point that, again, he was under the impression that money was just for capital improvement, but your sister jurisdictions have been using those monies for ongoing operations at those two facilities for well over a decade. Thank you for the extra 30 seconds.
Thank you. And thank you for your service. All right, those are the ones that were signed up. Is there anyone else in council chambers who want to give public comment? All right, with that, we are going to move to the consent calendar. And I believe that this will probably be a relatively short meeting this evening. So do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move we approve the consent calendar as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, this is I mean.
Okay. It's been moved by councilmember Althouser, seconded by councilmember Swarthout. Any discussion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, nay. All right, it has been approved. And with that, we have approved the minutes of the city council meeting work session of July 25th. Approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of July 31st. Approval of the minutes from the council's special joint tour with the Port of Olympia on August 8th. Payment vouchers, false terrace right-of-way license agreement, agreement with Clear Creek Contractors for the Palermo Lagoon dredging and maintenance project amendment one. Electric easement with Puget Sound Energy for parcels, and the numbers are here. And there's three of them. Barnes Lake Management District Steering Committee reappointment of Dana Day, Jody Keys, Leanna Madison, Leanna Shelton, and Tom Sparks. And then a letter of commitment with the Department of Commerce for the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update for Middle Housing Grant Application and preliminary docket for the 2023 Annual Housekeeping Amendments. And off-site lease with South Puget Sound Community College, where our Water Resources Department is going to be relocating. So with that, and I don't believe I have any of the individuals from the Barnes Lake Management present. So we do not have any other business, so we are going to be moving to council reports. And with that, we will start off with Public Health and Safety, Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Health and Safety Committee meeting is next Tuesday, September 12th, 8:00 a.m. And on the agenda is the Thurston County Prosecutor update regarding like the Blake decision and the new elements moving forward. And then also an interlocal agreement with Lewis County for Use of Jail Facilities Amendment Number Three.
Great, thank you. General Government Committee, Councilmember Althouser.
Thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee is scheduled to meet next Wednesday, September 13th at 8:00 a.m. There are two items on our docket, the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update regarding the housing element. And then we'll also be discussing the 2025 Comp Plan Update regarding the land use element as well. That's probably going to be most of our agenda for our meetings and moving forward, is at least one or two different elements of that comp plan as we work on the update.
Great, thank you. Public Works Committee, Councilmember Swarthout.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. The Public Works meeting for Thursday, September 7th has been canceled. The next time we'll be meeting will be September 21st.
Great, thank you. And Budget and Finance Committee has not met. I believe we'll be probably scheduling one relatively soon, but I don't have a date for that at this time. Next item is the Mayor-City Administrator Report. And I will, Administrator Parks, do you want to start?
Yes.
Yeah, your, your mic is on.
Thank you. So the council has been on recess, but staff has been busy working through a very busy summer. First, we'll start with some of the construction projects, which are probably the most visible to all of us. The Israel Road and Linderson Way Water Main Replacement Project, right out front here. We pushed really hard to get that work completed prior to school starting. We weren't able to do that. So traffic is going to be a little complicated over the next couple of weeks. We are working really hard with our contractor on phasing and a schedule that will be, have the least impact on the school. But we just ask for some patience as we try to finish up that important project this, this summer. We were able to get some extra paving in on our maintenance paving, so Boston Street and Kearsop Road are getting repaved this week. And then the city was awarded another grant. We have a fantastic staff of people that are getting us all sorts of grants in the transportation arena. We were awarded $224,000 in federal funds to complete a study of the 93rd Avenue SR 121 interchange. There's been a significant increase in that area due to passenger vehicles and semi-truck traffic from development. And so we're going to be able to take a look at that and help do some initial planning for that, for those improvements. In the Fire Department, we've hired several new firefighters over the summer. Most recently, Barrett Brown has started with the Fire Department on September 1st. He previously served in the US Army at JBLM, and he was a combat medic. Firefighter Gunner Christensen recently returned from a deployment to the Bedrock Fire near Eugene, Oregon. Tumwater Fire provides staff for special operations medical teams mobilized for those large wildland fire incidents. The teams include trained staff who provide rescue and medical support for the firefighters working in complex, complex terrain. And importantly, the Fire Department is interviewing strategic planning consultants next week. We've gotten three submittals, and the goal is to have a consultant onboard sometime in October to help us with the strategic planning process for the Fire Department. And continuing with the strategic planning master plan process, the Tumwater Police Department has embarked on their master plan process. And it all starts with data and outreach for Tumwater PD. So if you go to the Tumwater PD website, there is an application process for residents, workers, and business owners to participate in several focus groups that the Police Department is going to be initiating over the, essentially in October. So they're hoping to get 45 to 60 members from the public, from all segments of our community. And there's four different focus groups that will meet each of them different times and places on days of the week for about an hour and a half, really intended to get good feedback on what policing services are viewed as most important by the residents of our community. And then lastly, the city received its most recent annual opioid settlement fund distribution on August 2nd, and that was in the amount of $16,960. And that's all I have, unless there are questions.
Great. Thank you. So for my report, I attended the Intercity Transit Authority Board meeting on August 16th. And during that time, we conducted the public hearing for the draft annual report and the 2023-2028 Transit Development Plan. We also adopted a resolution which had amended some bylaws for Intercity Transit Authority Board. There was also that there on the website that they were doing a more customer-focused way of looking at the website. And so all of those updates had taken place on August 17th. So it will be easier to view many of the items. And one of the other interesting things is some are maybe aware of the amazing bus drivers that we have and crew that we have at Intercity Transit. So they had the State Transit Association Bus Rodeo, and they hold it every year. And this year it was held at Ctran in Vancouver, Washington. And Intercity Transit had an excellent showing that they were in the top three in all of the categories that they had, including that they had won this year again for the seventh straight year, the 2023 Grand Champion Award for the state. They had placed first in the maintenance competition for coach technicians. First place on the 35-foot coach competition. The second place on the 40-foot coach competition. And the second place body-on-chassis dial-a-left operator competition. So we have some really amazing drivers within the city, within Intercity Transit. And I think that we are kind of the standard for a lot in, in the state of Washington. And then on a more of a personal note, I had just received my advanced certificate and municipal leadership from the Association of Washington Cities. So that will make three of us at the city of Tumwater, who have those. And Councilmember Dahlhoff and Councilmember Swarthout both have that. So I have my certificate. It is quite a process to get this. And it is something that I feel is very important as a community leader to be able to obtain this advanced certification from AWC. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to council reports. So I guess I will start with Councilmember Althouser, and then I will go to Zoom.
All right, thank you, Mayor. The Regional Housing Council met on August 23rd. Councilmember Kathy actually represented us at that meeting as I was out of the country and unable to attend on vacation that day. But that was also, which makes me glad that we have two people who regularly attend those meetings. That was the day where the council received recommendations from the Affordable Housing Board about funding for projects. There was an RFP that went out two months, three months ago at this point. And we received applications for a total of $14 million in funding for affordable housing. But sadly, we only had about $5.2 million to actually award. This was the first time that we've had a group make recommendations to the Regional Housing Council. Essentially, the council embarked on a mission to try to incorporate more lived experience, more subject matter expertise. We formed an advisory board called the Affordable Housing Advisory Board to provide us with recommendations that we could then take up or work with them on refining or take any number of actions after receiving those recommendations. And this was the first time for our summer funding that we received those recommendations. The Regional Housing Council approved those unanimously, and I do have a list that I'll be sure to send out to council so folks get that. But the top-line items of that $5.2 million were $2.7 million went to 228 Olympia, that's the Interfaith Works project. $1.6 million went to Sequoia North, which is a housing authority project. $500,000 went to the Talison Town Homes Phase II project, which is Habitat for Humanity. Homes First got a total of about $525,000 for purchasing homes for affordable housing and also for the O'Farrell Senior EDU's roof. Rochester Organization for Families got about $15,000 for rental assistance programs. And Rebuilding Together Thurston County got about $75,000 for critical home rehab. So in total, that's about $5.2 million, and will create 130, about 137 new units of affordable housing in the county, which is tremendous progress and yet tremendously not enough. We know that the need is far greater than that, but it feels good to make a little bit of headway, but we have obviously a ton of work yet to be done. That's my report.
Great, thank you. I will go in order I see in, on the Zoom. Councilmember Jefferson?
Thank you, Mayor. Tumwater Hopes, we had a meeting on the 23rd of August to discuss choosing a new organization to sponsor us, because the Department of Health will not renew our contract. So this is due to reporting requirements. They just can't meet the deadline. So I put out an APB asking for help, please save Tumwater Hopes. And Hannah and Councilmember Swarthout helped us get connected with Shelly Long at the Family Support Center in ESD 113. So we send out four questions that we wanted answered, and then we're going to fairly choose which one meets our needs and who we would like to fall under. I also attended several meetings with the Thurston County Regional Law and Justice Council. We are still updating our, our vision and our goals, and we're tightening up that shot group. It's been almost a year, so we've put some work into it, and it should be out soon. I would like to now talk about the rib cook-off that the senior center had on 3 August. And sadly, I did not win the rib cook-off. Charlie won. I was highly, highly disappointed. I thought that the selection process was rigged, and I was just not happy. I wanted to take that apron from Charlie because we were awarded the apron, and Charlie just wore that apron with pride, and I was highly upset. But you know what Josh said, now Parks and Recs Department said, you did a good job, Angela. So don't be a sore loser. So congratulations, Charlie. But the point is, we had a great time. It was a wonderful event. We ran out of ribs, and I believe we had at least 100 seniors there. So it was a great event by a Parks and Recs Department. And now I plan to beat Charlie again in the chili cook-off next week, and that is my report.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor, and I look forward to being retired one day so I can too also contribute and join those events. Until then, I'm glad you had fun. Since our last council meeting, I've had seven meetings. The highlight would be the Sea Level Rise meeting, where I represent a lot at that meeting, and all that information for the And all that information for the sea level rise for downtown Olympia, which is the authorities included in that is Thurston County, the Port of Olympia lot and City of Olympia. All the information is on the City of Olympia website. But what was interesting is we talked about the 2023 work plan. And that includes installing a tide gauge, conducting a land subsid-, subsidence survey. It's seeing how the land moves, that's, that's what it means. Conducting a groundwater study and investigating public financing mechanisms, where one route of money could be $75 million. And it aligns with risk reduction actions that this comprehensive plan includes. It's a NOAA Coastal Regional Resilience Challenge. So that's pretty exciting. And then we approved the 2024 Sea Level Rise Collaborative Work Plan and Budget for around $180,000, which again would be elements, physical elements, operational, governance, and informational. So if anyone's interested about that, check out the City of Olympia website for the Sea Level Rise Collaborative Work Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dahlhoff. Councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you, Mayor. On August 28th, I attended the Thurston County Mitigation Collaborative Executive Committee meeting. And at the highlight of that meeting was we approved the proposed advisory recruitment process. So in addition to the, the Thurston County Executive Group that, that represents the jurisdictions, there's a citizens group that has been in existence for the last year. And I, we received an update on that and also the new application process. And for those who want to, it's called COST, a community advisory group. And the purpose of the group is to provide community perspective and feedback on implementation topics that deal with our, our climate plan. There are 15 interested stakeholders that represent a variety of community perspectives. They're not a technical advisory group. They are individuals whose life experiences, work experiences bring unique and varied viewpoints to improve the implementation of the Thurston County, Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. And our goal too is, like Councilmember Dahlhoff has brought up, is it, goal is to have our, have a diverse voice and thought and expertise included in this process. And so the application will be live. The process starts on September 1st. I will be circling back with our sustainability coordinator, Alyssa, just to make sure where public's interested in applying the application process will be open through the end of September. And we just encourage people to apply. It's, it's, you know, work on their part, but we want to hear people's voices. And so we really encourage the community to get involved. And if this is something that you feel like you'd like to, you know, to lead your voice to and your opinions, you're very well, we invite you to apply. So again, so that's for the community advisory work group. So that's my report.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Swarthout. Councilmember Snyder.
Mayor, I do not have a report, but I do have a suggestion for Angela. Anytime you want to borrow that apron, I'll be glad to loan it to you. But anyway, thank you for the kind words, but that's, that's my report.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember Agabi.
So I had a, I just come a meeting on August 7th. It was very brief and mostly about statistics at the animal shelter. So the statistic would be old by the time I give my report. But anyhow, so I said, that day, August 7th, the, there were 187 volunteers that had, that have provided 3,592 hours at the shelter. And then at that date, there were currently 193 animals at the shelter, about 72 in foster care. The rest were just kind of hanging around. And then the shelter provides a low-income spray and neuter program. And they work with two nonprofit programs to provide the services to low-income people. And the rest were... The community card program that piloted last year, being at 2022, received about 18,000 grand funded from Best Friends Animals Society. And we wouldn't be having any meeting for September until October 2nd. So that is my report.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Agabi. So that is all of the council reports. So is there any other business this evening? So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.